I'll call to order this regular meeting in the Bryan City Board of Education on Monday, May 18, 2020, and we are at the Bryan Elementary Commons. If you join me in the pledge, I would just...
In accordance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, pure and just as for all.
Can I welcome all who see me? Thank you. Mike, and I see some of our other administrators joining us via Google Meet. We can have the whole call?
Scott?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
Hi. First item is approval and signing of regular April meeting minutes, the 28th special board meeting minutes, the April 30 special board meeting, and the May 11 special board meeting minutes. Were there any comments or objections or...?
I'll give your motion to approve.
Thank you, Dustin.
Second.
Thank you.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
And seeing no public participation this evening, we'll move on to communications. I believe Diana has something from Syndra.
Yes. So I received this report today from Syndra Keeler, who is our four-county representative. The four-county students should have all received an end-of-year letter. The juniors will be able to get their items from their lab or locker, as well as return any library books. The seniors will be allowed to drop off their Chromebooks and chargers, and as well get into their lab and lockers. Per the letter, this will happen this coming Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday based on their program. While coming into the building, they must wear a face mask, cover, et cetera. Senior recognition will be held tomorrow, May 19, at 7:00 p.m. You can watch the senior recognition through the four-county website, and all seniors will be featured. Four-County Career Center has done a nice job of doing all kinds of social media as well, highlighting each of the seniors via Facebook, radio commercials, and billboards. With orientation having been canceled and not rescheduled at this point until a final determination on what the governor decides for the school system, packet pickup in August could also be the time that uniforms are ordered. It could be as soon as June. One last note, grades will be submitted shortly. Everyone, please stay well, respectfully submitted Syndra's...
And we thank Syndra for her faithful to getting that to us each month. The next item on the agenda is a recommendation by the Board of Education. It is for the employment of Mark Rary, superintendent, effective August 1, 2020, in accordance with the terms of the written contract. I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Second.
Mike or Dustin?
Use Mike, he's a... He's a mark all the way.
Thank you, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Is...I have a question. Is this the motion to accept him as our superintendent right now? This is the vote?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make a little bit of announcement or a more or less a comment, I guess. Mark and I, Mr. Rary, sorry, had a lengthy conversation on Friday, and I brought up some concerns that I had, that I have. And I think it was a productive conversation. I believe we understand each other really well, got a feel for each other, and I just want to say that some of these issues, I think, are important to our community and our school. But having said that, without getting into too much detail, it has...my whole thought process is on whether, well, let me rephrase that, choosing not to reside in our district. That is my concern moving forward. And again, we had spoke about it and had a good conversation. There may be some personal things that I need to deal with. I believe that he may be a pretty good candidate for us. He showed that in our conversation. So as far as, the best I can do is abstain at this point. I will support the school district as I always have. I challenge anyone to question where my support is. I believe strongly in the success of our students. There's no question that I want to remove myself. And saying that, I also have a couple other questions that maybe could be answered this evening, and that is, I've been approached by several people, wondering, curious, and I can't say that I'm not curious, but as to before this vote tonight, it had been put out in the public as to who our candidate will be. And I'm just kind of curious if somebody, if there'd be some clarity for our citizens or myself for that matter, just to clarify as to why it was released or the reasoning behind it. I'm just curious because I don't know how to answer that to the public when they ask me that, because I really don't know. I'm a new guy, trying to learn, but could somebody elaborate?
It is, it is typical practice. It's not so much for myself, but everybody that knows.
Sure. It's typical practice, and if you go back and look at this time last year, the announcement of my hire was made in the same manner, it was made public, that the board was going to be voting on it at its next meeting about the week before that was done, and that is the case pretty much universally across not only the state of Ohio, but many of the other states in this area. You do a quick Google search, and then you can see that the language that was used is almost always used, that the board will confirm or the board intends to vote on. Language is, is always used, of course, that no action is official until the board is actually active on it, it's just a prospective announcement of what the board is expecting.
Sure, sure. Thank you for your answer there. I, I want some clarity because, you know, really, hey, we have voted, blah, and I'm not sure. So, moving forward, I'm 100% supporting this census, the voice of this board, 100%, absolutely no question. I just, I feel this was the best thing for myself and for everybody moving forward, at least as far as I can tell. So, I appreciate it. And thanks for the conversation, Mr. Rary. I appreciate that, I really do. I meant a lot.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item, voluntary transfer of Mark Rary to assistant to the superintendent, effective May 19, 2020, in accordance with the terms of the written contract. Accept a motion for that.
I'll make a motion for the voluntary transfer.
Thank you, Dustin.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Dust?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item would be concerning Diana Savage stating that her assistant to the superintendent would become effective August 1 of 2020 in accordance with the terms of the written contract. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
You have them?
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is treasurer's reports.
Thank you. We'll begin with cash reconciliation. We have a farmer's purchase bank, $5,752,867.36. Total adjustments of $42,784.98. Our total investments are $13,801,330.13. Petty cash and change funds on hand amount to $7,150 for a total fund balance of $19,518,562.51. In addition to that, your normal collection of financial reports are in your folders as usual, and if there's any questions on those, I can answer them now, and if not, we'll begin talking about the five-year forecast.
Kevin, you and I went over this. I appreciate your adding on the additional information for the meeting so that we can see how that flows through. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, for the rest of the order, I went with Kevin, and we discussed how to understand it better before what exactly expenditures are doing per revenue line item, and how much we have left in the balance, or how much is coming back. So hopefully that's some clarity moving forward as we get into the schedules.
So twice a year, we are required to prepare a five-year forecast that looks at our past three years of actual, our current year, and the next four fiscal years moving forward, and try to estimate where we're going to be to the best of our ability. In normal times, forecasting particularly five years out is a difficult task. In this time of financial uncertainty, it has become even more so. We have this year had a cut from our foundation payment, $318,000. That cut was made effective mid-May. It represents a reduction of funds that we'll receive from now through the end of the fiscal year. Very difficult for us to do anything in response to that. Basically, all the money the district is going to spend has been spent by mid-May because we're at the end of our year, and so there's just, we just have to kind of absorb it. There, there's not really much other choice for us there. We have, though, seen some cost savings from being closed. We saved about $180,000 that we would have otherwise paid to substitute teachers. We've seen reduced utility costs somewhere in the neighborhood of about $50,000 to $60,000. And we were significantly under budget on several classroom supply accounts as well as we just didn't need to make those late semester purchases to finish the year. And so there have been some offsetting cost reductions. That being said, looking into next year, what we expect, the property tax revenues to remain relatively steady, especially since those are generally, you know, for our homeowners are paid through escrow accounts along with their payments, so those should in general stay pretty well intact, and so we expect to see maybe a slight rise in delinquency, which of course we will always catch up later when, when those delinquencies are paid. But we're, we're expecting our property tax revenue to remain relatively flat in the next couple of years until we come up to the property tax renewal, which is effective for the first year in 2023, so that will have to go to a vote at that point. Income tax, we have been fairly fortunate in our community to not have any major employers lay off employees, and so we do not expect to see a major decline in income tax for that reason. Fortunately, most of our community is, still has the opportunity to work. So whereas normally I projected 2.3% increase, which is the historical increase in the income tax, we're flattening that amount for fiscal '21 that we received this year, and then going back to a 2.3% per year increase in the fiscal years following that. Unrestricted grant and aid with foundation payment from the state of Ohio. We do not have any guidance at this point as to what the state is going to do with next year's foundation payment. The general consensus among the area treasurers is that we should expect about a 10% additional decrease in funds, and so that is what I am projecting for fiscal '21. So we are going to go down from approximately $7.4 million received this year to $6.67 million received next year. Then the general consensus again amongst the four-county treasurers is that we will see those funds returned to the fiscal '19 amount the following year, and so we've returned it there and left it flat at that amount for the rest of the forecast. The unrestricted grants and aid is our career tech education fund, as well as our economic disadvantage fund. Those two funding categories have not been cut this year, and therefore we do not expect them to be cut in future years, so we're projecting them at basically the same amount that we're receiving now through the end of that forecast. Property tax allocation is made up of a couple of components. One major component is tangible personal property tax replacement. That fund is going away. As you may recall, we switched from tangible personal property to commercial activity tax. The state of Ohio basically gave school districts time passive levy to replace it. We have not done so. We have just been receiving those replacements, but it is being phased out. The remaining amount there is the homestead rollback and the homestead exemption and the property tax rollback. Again, those fundings have not been touched this year. We don't expect them therefore to be touched next year either, and so those projections are continuing pretty much at pace. In all other revenue, two major things from causing reduction there, one, the loss of Fountain City Christian School, which rented the Arts and Education Building for approximately $145,000 a year. That income is going away. Additionally, as our funds are decreasing, we are losing investment income, and as the investment, the interest rates are going down, that is also decreasing our investment income, so we're taking two major hits from that standpoint. Also, we're reflecting that we do not anticipate being able to rent school facilities necessarily next year, which does provide some source, some additional income, but concerts and such are similar activities that are questionable at best for the next fiscal year. Looking down into expenditures, personal services, and employee reimbursements and insurance benefits, we're projecting those costs based on contracts that we approved this spring and our current staffing as we know it today carried forward through the end of, end of the contract. We are not projecting in here any sort of reduction in force or even attrition through retirement in just as simple the staff we have today and what we would pay them next year, the year after, and so on. So any staffing changes in there would reflect savings, but we, we don't anticipate, we don't try to project who that is, because who it is makes a huge difference in what the economy is on. So it's just our staff today carried forward. In fiscal '21, we have gone through the initial budgeting process on purchase services, supplies of materials, and other objects. We've gone through that budget and tried to tighten our belt significantly, and we are looking at approximately a 9.4% reduction across those categories. If you exclude utilities, it is about 10% reduction across those categories. So we're pulling the belt tight for next year and trying to see what we can do there. And then we've carried those amounts unincreased, basically a projected spending freeze through the remainder, remainder of that fiscal year. So we're looking, as it stands today, at about a $1.9 million loss for this fiscal year, and then a $3.5 million loss next fiscal year, again primarily driven by reduction in revenues, and then a $3.2 million loss the fiscal year after that, which again represents some of those revenues that we expect to come back. After that, we get into the renewal of the emergency levy, the $1.9 million levy, which is renewed every five years, and so that number drops way down because those funds moved to the bottom of the page where they show that they have to be renewed. But as you can see, at fiscal, this fiscal '23, we are still projected to be in the black, but fiscal '25, or excuse me, fiscal '24, even with the renewal of the emergency levy, we have a $4 million deficit, which of course we cannot do. So we have some serious work to do in the next five years based on this forecast. Additionally, and not reflected in this forecast, is the possibility of some other sources of funding. For example, CARES Act, we are expecting to receive approximately $260,000 from the CARES Act, which we intend to use to offset some of the wages that we've been spending this year, so that will represent a $260,000 savings off that $1.9 million. And additionally, I will be requesting permission here in a minute to use the student success and wellness funds to offset some of our wellness programs that we already have in place. We have approximately $575,000 on hand from that fund, which would represent another savings off that $1.9 million. We are kind of a model school for what the governor was looking to have done. A lot of the services that he was encouraging schools to add, we already do, and so we were looking to see if we could do something even more with those, with those monies, and that's why we, we had waited this long to implement them, but given the uncertainty of the current situation, I'm going to encourage the board to supplant the programs that we already have in order to, to help fight this deficit spending that we're looking at. So between those two programs, you're looking at probably a $700,000 give or take savings on this current fiscal year, which would reduce our fiscal loss of $1.2 million for fiscal '20. Any questions on the five-year forecast?
You argued by the loss for this year to reflect the savings that you talked about already, so that's already included in that.
And we will, and, and we are, you know, in a process always of right sizing those appropriations as we get to the end of the year, a little bit more here, a little bit less there, so that number will move between now and the end of June. We've got a month, we've got a month and a half, but that, that's the best snapshot I have as of the first part.
Yep.
Anything else?
CARES is just a one-time...
At this point, yes. And, and we do not know when exactly we're going to get access to that money. We may not actually get access to it until next fiscal year. We know how much we're supposed to get, but they haven't actually turned over the funding source yet.
And there's another thing that comes for the...
In theory, the student success and wellness funds, we should receive approximately another $800,000 next fiscal year. Again, it's uncertain.
Based on what happens?
Yeah, whether that's going to happen. It didn't get touched this year, but the funds were already in the school scams before the crisis started, so it's difficult to tell why they're going to decide to do next year with those funds. So then, moving on, I have modified appropriations for fiscal year 2020 for you. Again, as I say, we are going through the process of closing down appropriations based on them not being spent. And we had a net change in general fund of $125,000, a total net change of about $365,740. The big reason is the permanent improvement fund, which we see had a reduction of $206,000. That had to do entirely with HVAC repair on the elementary building. We had to appropriate money to do that repair while we waited for settlement funds to come in. Now that the settlement funds have come in and offset that expenditure, we've removed the appropriation, and so that is why we see such a significant change in appropriations in the department. And as, as Dustin was mentioning, there is a detailed, detailed list of every single appropriation change that is available for you in the monthly report section. Moving on, the next item I'm asking you to approve is basically at the behest of the Auditor of State. We are required, in accordance to Ohio Advice Code 3319.081, to pay all non-teaching employees during a pandemic or epidemic. Nevertheless, the state auditor would like for you to specifically approve those complying with that law, so I would ask that you do that. I ask that you approve the five-year forecast assumptions that I just went over for you. I asked permission to use the student success and wellness funds to supplant in fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '21 existing wellness programming. I ask you to approve the OHI Charter Workers Compensation Group rating. This is a group of other schools that we are in consortium with, and so they pool our workers' comp expenses across that, and we save about half of our workers' comp premium costs by being a part of that group. Additionally, we'd like to recognize the following donations. $500 from Thomas and Cindy Green for photography equipment to the DHS Arts Department. $1,000 from the Academic Mr. Club for the elementary. $1,000 from the Academic Mr. Club for the 612 building. $2,301 in the Academic Club for assemblies. $545, yeah, $545.89 from the Academic Booster Club for senior yard signs, and I actually realized this is a double entry, that, that $2,301 is part of the $2,750 from the Academic Booster Club for assemblies. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Detailed explanation, I think that helped us a lot. Anyone have anything else for...
Yeah, I think to, to approve these recommendations in accordance, I would feel more comfortable if we could take out the student success and wellness funds at this time.
Okay.
To just have a little more discussion from the board, and especially from our new situation with Mark coming in, I think it deserves a little bit more discussion, so I'd like to take that one out.
Anything else? Okay. I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve treasurer's report and recommendations, mine is the student success and wellness funds.
And a second?
I have a second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is for any old business. Okay. And new business?
No, we can just move right in. We have quite a, quite a bit of new business under our recommendations and personnel.
All right, then, right, we'll go right ahead.
So, good evening. Tonight, we want to start the many celebrations of the class of 2020 by asking the board to formally approve the list of graduates. Again, as a reminder, graduation is this Sunday, May 24, at 2:00 p.m., and we are going to be doing our first and hopefully only drive-through graduation ceremony in the events parking lot. So we want to recognize these seniors. It's been a very interesting time and a very challenging time, and we just want our class of 2020 to know how much we appreciate all that they have done to work to get to this point, and some have, it's, it's just been overwhelming. And so we want to show our appreciation for them, we want to congratulate them, and looking forward to having this one last celebration with them. I also ask the board to approve a resolution to continue for our contingency online learning plan for the 2019-2020 school year. So, back in the summer of 2019, the Board of Education could have approved the use of Blizzard Bags, was the term that most people remember. Blizzard Bags could have been approved for use for weather-related closures or any other type of closure that would have happened in the educational programming. We, as a district, had chosen not to use Blizzard Bags, and we had put in contingency days into our calendar. This state, the state now allows us to go kind of back and approve in retrospect that we do want to have remote learning as an option for our students, and it specifically talks about this being a response to the news that we were going to have to close and that we were to provide remote and continuing education for our students. So, again, it just states that Ohio Advice Code allows that schools must be in attendance for a minimum number of hours each school year, and that we can... And that we can adopt a plan for students to make up loss of instruction via online or remote learning. And that whereas House Bill 197, in response to COVID, shut us down, that this is our plan in order to continue that learning. And so then it goes into detailing how our teachers have made numbers of lessons, how we have lessons available for review by the building principals to make sure that they are adequate and cover the necessary material that we did through website or other approved technology through our IT department, that teachers were communicating with students on a weekly basis. They were monitoring the progress, that the posted, they would have two weeks to complete the assignments, that for preschool through fifth-grade students who did not have technology at home, that we would provide paper copies or packets, which we have done. And that should the circumstance warrant a change, that you're allowing the superintendent to make that. But given that this Friday is our last instructional day for students per our regularly approved calendar, I don't foresee any changes between now and Friday. So I would ask for board's approval of that plan. And then, go ahead.
Do you have one clarification, Mike?
Yes.
So this is going to be for every day missed next year? We're going to enact this, or this is just if this continues?
No, this is for, this is just for this school year, for 2019-2020. We haven't made any...
No recommendations?
No recommendation for next year. This is to go retroactive back to March.
I think the narrative is going to be a whole school next year.
No.
I'm starting to sweat over here.
No. We're not there. I'll give you that warning.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other, if there are other questions, please ask, because I don't mind giving further clarification. But in anticipation of next year, we do want to go ahead and do some of our annual actions. One of those is approving lunch prices. So we really felt that this year we were doing well with our food service and that we were going to end up in a good location as far as the budget. So we are recommending that the lunch prices remain the same for next school year. And those are divided up by building. We have an MOU with BEA for supplemental contracts. So again, trying to kind of pre-plan what may or may not happen for 2020, 2021. Sitting down with our union leadership, we have come to an agreement regarding supplemental contracts. And it's important that the board understand this before we get to the later action of the personnel items. If, in the course of the 2020-2021 school year, we would have an interruption of services for, again, something related to COVID or some other emergency declared by the state, and we would have to shut down a season, or a fall play, or a spring musical, or a quiz school team. This MOU allows the administration to sit down with union leadership and determine an appropriate prorated funding of that contract. If the season is canceled prior to, so like, again, let's say that tomorrow, they decide to cancel all of fall sports season, then we are not obligated as a board to pay those contracts. It's very important. We are so thankful and grateful to our union for being willing to sit down at the table and to work with us alongside of us with this, so that we can balance the fact that there are coaches in sports that as soon as they're given permission, they are ready to begin, but we don't know what might happen in the future. And so this is, this is really critical for us. And again, very appreciative of the union's support. Workbook and supply fees for 2020-21 school year. Again, this is not a change from previous school years. I also have the drafted changes to the 2020-2021 K-12 student handbook, the preschool handbook, and the athletic handbook. And those were sent to you for you to review prior to this meeting. We would also recommend the approval of the school calendars. And I'll pull up 2020-2021 again real quick. So again, our proposed start date to come back to school is August 19th. And we are hopeful that that means that we have students within our buildings and our classrooms and that we have staff ready to welcome them back and get started on more traditional school setting. And this would outline our school holidays and our teacher in-service and training days. We also have calendars for the 2021-22 and 2022-2023 school years. This will allow both families, students, and parents to know in plenty of time. Dates for schools, I think this is a really benefit for our community to be able to know years ahead what the school year will look like. So again, I ask your approval of those calendars. The Defiance College MOU, we plan to host some student teachers in our buildings with Defiance College. We're grateful to have a partnership with them. And then the NWO ESC Mentor Program. So for any of our new teachers, we do have to assign mentors to them. And this is to pay for the training that they must attend. So any questions on those recommendations?
I would just say, I'm glad to see that we don't need to change lunch prices or the fees, considering where everyone in our community is with this time of uncertainty. So I appreciate the fact that we don't have to increase anything in those two areas. Anything? I would accept a motion to accept superintendent's recommendations at this point.
So moved.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Thank you, Dustin.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dad, with your permission, Mr. Schaefer, can we bounce back to the addendum?
Yes.
For you?
I apologize, I in-missed the items that ended up on our addendum. Two items. The first does have to do with the Food Service Fund. As we said, we were on track throughout the school year up to the closure to be in the black for the Food Service Fund, which we were very excited about. Unfortunately, we've gone from serving approximately 1,000 meals a day to having served just over 2,000 meals in the last month and a half. And that just does not cover our salaries for the cafeteria workers, which we are paying. So I am projecting at this point that we are going to need to transfer from the general fund to the Food Service $70,000 to have Food Service Fund be in the black on June 30th of this fiscal year. Again, we believe that the Food Service Fund is where it needs to be for normal operations. This is just one of those unfortunate side effects of this current situation. So I ask for permission to transfer from the general fund to Food Services $70,000. And then also, we had come to you back in, I believe it was December, they had received permission for Dee Collins to do up to 100 hours of work on the website redesign. But it was specifically for January and February. We ended up not doing that project during that time period. So our authorization for her to spend those hours has expired without any of them being worked. So we would ask for you to reauthorize 100,000 hour, or sorry, 100 hours, just 100 hours to work on the website redesign, not in a particular time period, but just for that project so we don't have to come back and ask her approval for it after two weeks. And so those are my items to add.
So I'm sorry, Kevin, so you said this approval for Dee is for what period of time?
Just undefined until the project's finished. So 100 hours to...
Specifically to the website redesign?
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, in addition to her regular weekly, or well, I guess she's on monthly hours now. But in addition to those, that's specifically dedicated to this project.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll need a motion and vote on that. Yes. If I could have a motion to accept those to addendums.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move into personnel. And again, if you have any questions, please let me know. It's quite a lengthy list, because in May, we're getting ready to get set for the new school year as well as both with extracurriculars and supplemental contracts. So first, I'd like to offer a one-year limited teaching contract effective for next year to Brittany Drogen as a fourth-grade general education ELA teacher with eight years' experience, bachelor's level, pending receipt of her transcripts and background check. I'd like to transfer certified staff effective next year, Amy Von Dalen to fifth-grade general ed teacher, and Tina Del Favero to fourth-grade teacher in social studies. St. Patrick's School is asking us to hire Stephanie Lamore as auxiliary services personnel clerk, two hours a day for 90 days during the school year. I'd like to recommend our summer student workers in the IT department on an as-needed basis at minimum wage. And those two would be Anthony Malenka and Elena Romez, pending their background checks. We are going to run a high school summer school class with Joe Good as the teacher. And then it is time for contract renewals for our staff. And this is per our negotiated agreement. So I'd like to offer one-year limited teaching contracts effective for 2020-2021 to the teachers that you see listed. Two-year contracts, again, effective 2020-2021, to the teachers listed in that section. Four-year limited teaching contracts for the teachers listed under letter H. Five-year limited teaching contracts for the teachers listed in letter I. And then continuing teacher contracts for Abby Hughes, Mindy Kepler, Jamie Shoffner, and Carrie Welkow. I would like to offer a one-year administrative contract to Rhonda Gibson as school psychologist, effective August 1st. Rhonda comes to us out of the Tswito area with two years of experience as a school psychologist. I would like to ask approval of the 2020-2021 supplemental contracts and volunteers as per the exhibit. And I'll open that up. So we have, again, both our academic and our athletic and music and arts contracts for our teaching staff or certified or classified personnel, as well as for the fall season only, our teacher, or I'm sorry, our coaches and directors and advisors who are hired from outside of the system. And then we have a list of our music department volunteers for the school year, our extracurricular volunteers for the school year, and our athletic volunteers for the school year. I ask for the non-renewal of supplemental contracts and non-certified staff. This is for the spring season. This is an annual action after each season for any non-certified staff member or person outside of the district. And again, I would remind you and the audience that this is not a reflection of their performance, but an annual action because they are outside of the certificated union. We also, in May, non-renew our certified and classified substitutes. So we are asking the board's permission to non-renew both our teaching substitutes and our classified substitutes. And then what happens is we send them a letter and a request of letting us know if they are interested in being hired back for next year. And we'll start that process over the summer. We are going to, because of the closure of Fountain City Christian School, we are going to reduce at this time part of our classified staff. And that reduction would be to Gary Beck, one of our custodians. And that would be effective June 20th. Gary will then go on...
June 1st.
June 1st, I'm sorry, thank you. June 1st of 2020. That, Gary would then go on a list if, in the event that we were recalling custodians back to work, he would be the first one called back at that time. We have resignation from Zeb Frank as a fifth-grade teacher, effective May 31st of 2020. That is the reason we had the hire at the beginning, was because of this resignation. And then we have a resignation of Jonell Holmes as high school concessions coordinator, effective May 31st of 2020. And at that time, I'm going to stop and ask the board, or ask Deb you to request a motion.
If I could just have one question?
Yes.
So Joe Good for summer school is at, are we having some other summer school classes offered? Or is that...
At this time, that's the only one we have.
And we have some other online courses. We have ACE Digital Academy that we work with. And we have students taking also online health. And some other students are signing up for some other various courses offered through ACE Digital Academy.
Okay, so this is the only summer school class that's filled by a person?
Taught by Bryan City School staff.
Right.
And it's also worth noting that it's going to, in all probability, be held remotely. And we have some software that allows the students to track personal development. And so it's a really, we've seen some amazing results with this program. And Mr. Good will oversee that.
Okay, very good. Just because I know we've talked about the finance being in class and then oral communications remaining, except for summer school.
Yes.
Okay.
So students, yeah, just to elaborate, just for a little bit more on that, the students do have the ability to take oral communications online if they need that credit. And considering the circumstances that we're in right now with the transition, we're going to look to offer personal finance then in the future for summer classes.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Appreciate that. All right, so if there are no other questions, I would accept a motion up through P to accept those recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Ben, and a second. Scott?
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're to letter Q. I'd like to recommend for approval of the supplemental contract for fall 2020-2021, Scott Staten as assistant football coach, pending background checks.
I would accept a motion for that addition.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. Do you have your second? I'll second it.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
No.
Thank you.
And then under letter R, 2020-21 volunteer, Ben Camerillo for the band program.
Accept a motion for that.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dustin.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
I'm staying.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into policy items. This will not require a motion at this time. But I have shared with each of you the draft changes to the policies that you see listed here. These are, again, as a reminder, recommended by Viola, which is a company that continues to monitor changes in the law and in any, any legal changes or any revised code and recommendations. So again, no vote needed tonight, but if there are questions, I'll intercede those at this time.
And typically, these are things where we recommend these based on changes in the law.
Correct.
And standards, regulations, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
And under reports, other reports of the superintendent legislative finance update, I think Kevin did a great job of helping that for the board this evening with the five-year forecast. And appreciate the work that he's put into that and the time. Like, as he said, we did go over the budget spending for non-personnel items. The problem that we ran into is when the announcement came that the budgets were getting cut, we had already completed our scheduling and our, our staffing for next year based on our student enrollment numbers. So there isn't much we can move in that area for next year. However, moving into the fall, as we start preparing for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, knowing that we have those reductions facing us, knowing that we have the deficit spending, one of the things I'll be working on with both Mark and Kevin is just making sure we take a look at where our student enrollment is, what class offerings that we offer, and where we can see some reductions in personnel from the top all the way down, from administration to teaching positions to classified positions as well. So again, the numbers that, that Kevin shared tonight certainly are not something that we want to be proud of. We are thankful that we were able to withstand the budget cuts that were made in this month. But certainly know that we have a lot of hard work ahead of us to try to balance that budget for our community. And we owe that to them. So we will begin working on that almost immediately. The board meeting, our next board meeting will be June fifteenth. Let's just say location to be determined based on how the state is progressing. The business advisory committee is scheduled to meet June seventeenth. We'll take a look at that. And Deb, you had asked me to mention that the month of June is typically when we host an all-day board retreat. So we were looking at the week of June fifteenth. Now, I want to clarify, because that Monday evening, we have our board meeting regularly scheduled. So we were looking at either the Wednesday or Thursday of that week, if that would be possible. And I know you'll need to check your schedules, but just kind of where we were thinking.
Thank you.
Just something about that?
Yep. And then we do have our other administrators. We're glad that they can join us through our Google meeting. So Mr. Savage, you want to give an update on where we are with athletics?
Good evening. On week seven, we held our virtual signing day with five seniors student athletes that need their, they declared their commitment to play a sport in college as they pursue their undergraduate degree. We had over twenty family, friends, coaches, administrators online virtually who involved with that event. And BMU was also gracious enough to stream it live. And we had over sixty individuals that viewed that event live on BMU. That makes our total to ten seniors student athletes that have committed this school year to play a sport in college and have been here for tw- for twenty-eight years. And they'll never remember, you know, that'd never be that high, which is an incredible testament to our, to our senior class. The girls' basketball comes awards virtually on May twelfth with Coach Roshi and his staff. And they did a great job recognizing that team and their accomplishments, the championship and so on. The all-sports, NWO All Sports Team competition, when the results were declared about two weeks ago, the boys finished in second place behind Wasiyan. The girls finished as the all-sports champions of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. As of early last week, all-sports were finally shut down for good. There was still a glimmer of hope for some tournament, baseball, softball, tennis, and track that was all shut down by the OHSA last week. Summer update, Lieutenant Governor Husted today announced that the governor's office and the Ohio Department of Health will begin coordinating with the OHSA executive director, Jerry Snodgrass, to develop further calls and guidelines for school-based educational athletics. And this will be implemented, uh, be under the guidance of our local health department and our, and our, our school administration as well. Our decisions on fall sports, I don't expect anything until mid to late July, with in August first being the first date for fall sports to begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bassett, welcome in.
Hello, good evening. Just to update on lunches, Kevin said earlier, we significantly decreased our lunches from what we would normally do for normally in-school session. But we're actually about sixty-three lunches a day that we're able to send home with kids. Can do that two days a week, sending home on Mondays, three lunches. And then on Thursday, we're able to send home two lunches, Thursday and Fridays. And then some, also some weekend food through our bareback program. With end of school, wrapping up this week, we'll serve, our last day will be on Thursday. So we'll send home lunches for Thursday and Friday. And then NOCAK, which is the Northwestern Ohio Community Action Commission, normally does a summer food program, is all set and ready to go as well. They do that through Batty Marsh Park, do that there. Usually have an activity for the kids. Obviously, this summer, that's not allowed them to do that. But they'll have grab-and-go meals for students. They can come Monday through Friday. Obviously, it'll be closed like July fourth holiday. They're able to come and grab some lunches from eleven forty-five to twelve thirty. So a little shorter window there, that's their normal operating window. So glad that they're able to do that. And that does not, not just school-aged kids. They will provide lunches for children ages one to eighteen. So happy that we're having them in our community, helping our kids out. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Cox is also streaming in, welcome.
Hi there. Hey, you know, Diane, I wanted to echo a little bit what you said earlier about showing appreciation for our students. You know, our, our seniors work very, very hard, but also the students at this level at the elementary, you know, they're missing out on field days and field trips and all of those things. So they work very hard. I just wanted to make sure I did a little shout out to them. The, the remote work is coming in, the paper pencil, items and worksheets are coming in. We're laying those out so teachers can review that work as well. Today, we have our parent pickup for those that have the last name of A through F. That went very well. We're gonna continue Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for parents. If parents need an evening time, we did set up an evening time for Wednesday, May twentieth, from four to six. For the evening slot, we just leave parents to make sure that they are inter-messaging on Facebook or contacting us, administrators through email, or we're here at school this, and, and take that phone call. Also, I wanted to thank the community for, they are celebrating teacher appreciation and a bunch of our community members went ahead and they are sponsoring a media blizzard for Dairy Queen for each one of our employees at Bryant City School. We are very thankful for that. And as Chad mentioned, bear bags, our bear bag program was successful because of Sarah Van Paul and Angel Reinen, who came in every Friday to pack bags for our students. So I wanted to make sure that they were recognized for all their hard work that they have put into that.
Thank you, Karen. And Mark, you're here with us tonight, so we can have you give your report.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll just start, first of all, by saying thank you. Very excited, that doesn't describe it, can't describe in words how I feel to be provided with this opportunity to, to serve the district and, and serve the community. So very much looking forward to it. So I just want to thank the Board of Education and Kevin Schaefer for all the time invested in the interview processes. It was a great conversation, and it just makes me excited to look forward to the vision that we all share for success for our students and for the community and, and ready to hit the ground listening, but also hit the ground running as we look to move forward. So speaking of move forward, I know I'm gonna have the opportunity to, to transition with Mrs. Savage. So I'm eager to learn from her many years of experience, although she's very young in age. She has lots of experience under her belt. So looking forward to being a sponge and absorbing that, that all in. And so thank you again for, for all of that, very, very excited. As we mentioned earlier, it is the end of the year, so we're wrapping up our remote learning processes. And we finish up, the majority of assignments finished last week, but we're, this year, or this week, we're handing out all of items, all of the items that are needed for graduation, or if students had items left in their lockers, so they're able to come in. They were coming in today. Hopefully, the weather cooperates a little better tomorrow. They're able to come in tomorrow and pick up their items. And then that all leads to the end of the week, in which we hope to have all of our late assignments turned in so that students can continue to receive as much credit as possible. And then on the big weekend, it's graduation ceremony weekend. So the first-ever drive-in ceremony. Just some technicalities for you. Tune in, it's gonna be live on Q ninety-six point five, so you can listen in on your radio. So even if you're at the event, we encourage you at the event to listen in. But it's also gonna be live on BMU TV. And BMU has a YouTube page. It's, you can subscribe to them at BMU Video, and you can stream it live there as well. And a nice feature about that is you can access the YouTube video for as long as you need to after the ceremony. So share that with loved ones and family members. We're really trying to make this ceremony as close to a real ceremony as possible, although considering the circumstances, we're in the drive-in setting. So we're very hopeful that our students and our families really enjoy all that happens to celebrate all their successes on that day. Following the ceremony is gonna be a parade through town. Maps have been posted on social media and our website, have been emailed out to, to families today. But the parade basically takes you out on Fountain Grove Drive here, turns right on County Road thirteen, past the football field, and then we're gonna turn right on Center Street with the goal of getting to the park. So once we go past Eric's Ice Cream and then turn left into the Recreation Park, there's a lot of green space there for community members and loved ones to spread themselves out, socially distance, of course, and celebrate all of our senior successes. So we encourage them to, to line the sidewalks and the streets of the park. And then we're gonna take the Park Street through and turn right on Oakwood and take that then to Avenue A, where we're gonna turn right again and head towards Center Street. So where the old Washington Elementary sat, there's another large area of green space. And we again encourage all of our community members and loved ones to take advantage of that open space to socially distance and celebrate our seniors. So we thank our city officials for working with us on the ceremony and helping plan that parade, and then to help, you know, keep that route safe and open for our graduates. So we're looking forward to an exciting weekend. We hope Mother Nature cooperates. Last I saw, weather was supposed to be potentially in the eighties. So we will, we will take that. And then one last thank you, we, we did talk about creating and supporting the staff, but also to just all of our parents for all that they have done. They have taught with us for the last, wow, it's been what, eight weeks now or so? So they have become educators with us, not that they weren't before that, but we appreciate all that they've done to support this entire process that caught all of us by surprise as we navigated through the, the entry into spring, spring months. So thank you to everyone, and we hope the year wraps up very well. And we'll see what next year brings, hopefully back to a bit more normal.
Thank you. I am not aware of a time for executive sessions evening. Unless there's anything else, I will take a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Scott.
Second. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you. So thanks, everybody.